All right. Hello, my name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This is a meeting taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. Tonight is a public hearing on population and housing allocations. A reminder that the Zoom chat feature is modified so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, the clerk. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Alves, and Chastain. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Russell and Foster. And Commissioner Frank Corbin and Commissioner Gretchen Fritsch are absent. With five, yes, five planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Chair Spogen.
Thank you, Megan. My name's Lori Spogen, and I'd like to call to order the May 9th, 2023 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. And tonight, I'd like to start by having everyone on the commission introduce themselves and then our audience members, please.
Kathy Justine.
Jason Alves.
Bob Russell.
Corbin Foster.
Lori Spogen.
I'm Mindy Brooks, the Senior Long Range Planner for Lewis County.
Eric Hayes, City of Toledo, City Council.
Steve Burt, City of Toledo Planning Chair.
I'm Tammy Barconi, Planning and Building Manager for Schehalis.
Thank you. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for tonight, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I'd like to entertain a motion and a second from the commission to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
And vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bob, you're muted, and Corbin? Oh, thanks.
Mute. There we go. Russell's an aye.
Okay.
Thank you. The motion passes with five yes votes.
Also, prior to tonight, we received the meeting notes from the April 25th meeting. If there are no corrections, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to adopt as written.
I make a motion to adopt it as written.
A second. Vote. Aye.
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 Russell's an aye.
Foster's an aye.
The motion passes with five yes votes.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to provide comments? These comments are different than testimony. And any comments that anybody would want to provide on the population and housing allocation could be provided after the staff report. Megan, is there anybody online?
There are no hands raised, and nobody has signed up in person.
Okay. Then we'll head right to tonight's agenda. It's a hearing, public hearing, on the population and housing allocations. We'll start with a brief staff presentation, followed by questions from the commissioners, and then we will hear public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that believes that the public was not notified in a timely manner? And do any of the commissioners have any disclosures to make? Not hearing any? I guess we'll turn it over to Mindy.
Thank you. Again, Mindy Brooks, Senior Long Range Planner. So, excuse me, I'll do a short presentation, just summarizing the process and the allocations. The staff report was sent to you guys back on April 20th, so it's been a couple of weeks since you looked at it. So we'll kind of, we'll breeze through everything pretty quickly. We do have representatives from some of the cities here tonight. Thank you very much for coming out. So if you have any specific questions for them, feel free to ask those. Next slide. So just a reminder to everybody that population and housing allocations are an input to the comprehensive plans. And the comprehensive plans for us and for the cities is a primary policy document that drives zoning designations and development regulations. The county and the cities are required to update our comp plans every 10 years, and this is called periodic review, or periodic update, sorry. And all of us start our periodic update on July 1st, so we need these population and housing allocations to be adopted prior to July 1st. Next slide. So we'll dive into population first. Every five years, Office of Financial Management gives the county an updated 20-year population forecast. We work with the Plan Growth Committee to allocate the countywide allocation to each jurisdiction, so all the cities plus the unincorporated areas. Plan Growth Committee is made up of the mayor or their designee from each city and the chair of the Board of County Commissioners. The Plan Growth Committee has been meeting this year since January. They've been meeting monthly. And on April 19th, they voted to recommend the population and housing allocations that are in that April 20th report and what we're presenting tonight. I shared last time with you that we had spoken with the Board of County Commissioners about the option of going over the OFM high, right? So OFM gives us a range, a medium, which is their most likely prediction, and then a low and a high off of it. And you can petition to go above the high that OFM has, and so we spoke with the Board of County Commissioners about if they would like to entertain that option, and they directed us to stay within the range. So we shared that last time, but everything since that discussion, we've been keeping ourselves within the range of OFM. Next slide. The way the Plan Growth Committee determined allocations was that each city actually proposed their own methodology and supporting data to look at their own 20-year 20 years' worth of growth. Those methodologies and data are in Attachment A of that staff report, so all those details are in there. And each city kind of took a different approach. They didn't all take the same approach. Many of them, though, did take an approach of looking at the current permits that are already in the pipeline. So they look at how much development they anticipate over the next couple of years, and then adding that to the existing population, then taking that 20-year trend out, right? So they sort of counted what's in the pipeline as current population and then added the growth trend out. Some cities like Schehalis did a land capacity analysis, so rather than doing what's in the pipeline, they looked at the capacity of the land within their city limits, within their UGA, and applied an assumption of density to that. And that gave them their, their look at their 20-year population growth. And then Centralia took yet another approach, so they're actually doing a housing action plan. And so they used their housing action plan to back into the population, so looking at what housing they would need, and came at it kind of as a reversed way at it. When you combine all these estimates together, we were over the high, right? So the methodologies and data for the cities came in well over the OFM high, which is why we spoke with the Board of County Commissioners about the petition process. But we've worked with Schehalis and Centralia, and they both agreed to allocations that are lower than what their methodologies suggested they would need. Lewis County is also taking a lower than what we would actually predict our population would be. By Centralia, Schehalis, and Lewis County taking those lower numbers, the other cities can have the allocations that are in their methodologies. Next slide, please. So these are the recommendations from the Plan Growth Committee. They did vote unanimously to bring these forward to you. The table includes the existing population and then the 2045 population. The next column is the change, so just how many people will be added to each city over the next 20 years. And then there's the share of population growth. The share is basically of the total, 7.55% goes to Centralia, and 61.17% goes to Schehalis, et cetera. The reason why we need that column in there and why you're adopting that is because that is an input to the housing model, so we need that share of the allocation. But the next slide here has the data in a different way, which is just, I think, and Commissioner Russell pointed out, probably a more useful way for us to look at the information. So this is the 20-year growth rate. So again, this has existing population, 2045 population growth, and then what that growth rate is. So in the table, Centralia grow by 7.26%, Schehalis by 133.62%, et cetera, et cetera. Just note that 100% growth means a doubling. That's what that means. So three of our communities, Schehalis, Toledo, and Winlock, are anticipating to more than double over the next 20 years. So next, we'll talk about housing, but do you guys have any questions for me or for our cities about the population?
So Schehalis, I just wanted to know how large your UGA is.
As far as acreage, I don't know that number off the top of my head, I have to tell you.
That's fair. That's fair. What about Toledo? Can you tell me what the size of your UGA is?
I can't give you the size of our UGA, but we are currently, next week, we are having our 60% hearing, which will annex in the bulk of our UGA. So by the end of this year, we will have no UGA. And, and there's already builders wanting to build on that. I could look that up if you wanted.
I was just curious, because I do know what Winlocks is, and I'm trying to get a feel for these numbers and how they're impacting. I mean, with Toledo, the growth rate, 240%, is quite a large number.
We're estimating we're going to double in five years. So we have, in the city limits, we have 50 acres getting developed, which will be 97 houses. And then in the urban growth, we're picking up Toledo Tel, which brings a little light industry, and, and a plot of land, which they're thinking will be about 200 houses, and then a little more mixed-use light industry as well.
So does your UGA go out, I'm sorry, if I'm, does your UGA go out towards Jackson Highway, out towards the airfield, or no?
Our UGA, it does not. It, our UGA right now is to the west, directly to the west of Toledo. So if you know the area really well, it's Toledo, Vader, and Plumb, Plumbon. And our urban reserve is actually towards Excellent 63.
Megan, do I have the ability to share my screen, or can I, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up a map for you really quick. Who's calling? Oh, Frank Corbin's calling. Hold on. Oh, okay, never mind. I'll put him away. They're like, oh, is something going on? Okay, so let me, let's see here. Let me share my screen.
My apologies for running late. I got absolutely buried outside in my mowing, and I completely lost track of time, so my apologies.
That's fine, Frank. Glad you made it.
Do we have enough for our quarrel now?
Yeah, we, we were fine, but we're glad to have you anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I've pulled up a map, and we can kind of slide around on it. So Toledo is the red, that's the city limits, and the yellow around is the UGA. So I can zoom in a little bit to Toledo here for you.
Mindy, I'll just share. Eric Eisenberg sent in the chat that Centralia's UGA is about 4,000 acres, or Schehalis. Schehalis's UGA is about 4,000 acres, and he measured it on the map.
Okay, great. Thank you, Eric. So this is the map of Toledo. Again, the, the red is the city limits, the yellow is the, is the UGA area there. And then I have to zoom way out to get you Schehalis. So we've got Schehalis here. Most of their UGA comes to the south there. Does that kind of help you get a sense of?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I guess I have a question of anybody that are representing the cities here. Mindy said that when they got together, some of the Centralia and Schehalis gave up some of their population to allow some of the other cities to have a higher calculation. I was wondering, did you want to hire one?
So, so when it comes to Schehalis, what I did is I calculated, sorry, I calculated the four large developments that we have, and I multiplied those out by maximum density, which is about 24 units per acre, which is what we have right now. I came up to over 68,000 people would be added to our population. 68,000 people brings a lot of infrastructure upgrades and all of that to come with it. And what we're facing is we have some, some infrastructure issues right at the moment that we're trying to find funding for. If we can't justify why we need those infrastructure upgrades, it gets really hard for us to find that funding. So when our population projections are higher, it is a lot easier for us to justify getting the loans for those infrastructure upgrades, because we can show that we can pay it back.
Understood. Okay, that makes sense. Who, since you're from the city of Schehalis, who decides in the city of Schehalis how you're going to grow? Like, you know, whether you're going to require them to put all multifamily housing, or that you would allow some area in your city of Schehalis to be single-family housing? Who determines, what, what's the process? Does that go from the council, or is that just from your office?
So it's a zoning issue. So what our four large developers are looking to, or our three large developers are looking to do is what we call a master plan development, in which they can do multifamily, single-family. They can do commercial, neighborhood commercial, they can have schools and parks and those types of things in their developments. And so those three are all looking at a mixture of them to some degree or another. At this point, I don't know what that degree is, because they haven't come to me with a set of plans and said, hey, this is what we're thinking. To this, to this date, all they have done is said to me, what can we do? And they like the idea of doing it in a mixed way.
Okay, so, so is one of the three, the one off of Kennicott and Jackson?
That is one of them.
Okay.
And then the other one is down at New Waukum Golf Course. And then the third one is Raindrop Properties up behind the Elks. Yep, so those are the three big ones. We also have an apartment complex that's looking to come in, and they want to put in about 280 units. So, but that is going to be straight up multifamily.
Okay. I was just wondering who determines, you know, because it could dramatically change the, you know, the culture of your area if it's all rentals.
Absolutely.
And, and so I just wondering who is in charge of that? And it sounds like you've said that at some point, somebody made the decision and zoned it, so it would be the applicants that would be deciding whether to use the maximum density or, or a planned community that would maybe have a different feel to it or something.
And in Kennicott and the Raindrop Properties in particular, there are sites where they do not lend themselves to a really dense development, but they really do lend themselves to a million-dollar home. Or a $500,000 home. So in both of those developments, I think we're going to get a nice mix of anywhere from the large developments down to the multifamily.
Okay. And because in the city of Schehalis, and I'm sure Toledo would be similar, when you take these high count, high growth rates like this, somebody's got the pedal to the metal to figure out the schools, the roads, the fire, the sewer, the water, and all of these issues, because you have to have that provided in, when, Mindy? When, when do they have to meet this? You know, when do they have to be ready for?
Sure, I'll answer that question, and then I also noticed that Barb Russell has her hand raised, so she wants to chime in. So just keep in mind that the cities have to have a comprehensive plan, and that drives their zoning, and they are starting periodic update just like us on July 1st. And so they will be revisiting these questions of how do we grow to accommodate population growth? When they're doing their development, all of us are beholden to the same growth management rules about adequate public facilities. So when development comes in, we have to demonstrate adequate public facilities. However, each jurisdiction defines our own adequate public facilities. The only concurrent public facility is transportation. That's the only one that's required under state law. So for us, we've also said that fire needs to be adequate, and, you know, we have a list. Schools need to be adequate. I don't know if Tammy knows off the top of her head what, what your adequate public facilities list is.
So we have identified schools, fire, police, parks, and I think those are the ones, those are the big ones. Yeah, and transportation, obviously, yeah.
I mean, some jurisdictions go as far as to identify libraries and other things. So you get to choose your own list of what is considered adequate public facilities. You and your service providers also can determine what is adequate. So there's, there's a mix, and each jurisdiction can do it their way, but we all fall underneath the same growth management rules, and we're all doing the updates at the same time. And Barb, I'm sorry, you've had your hand raised for a while. Do you want to chime in? Barb, you're muted if you're trying to talk. You're still muted if you're trying to speak.
Barb sent me a chat that she cannot unmute.
Do you want to type something into chat, and we'll ask Megan to read it into the record? While she's doing that, did you have any other, sorry? Clarifying questions? Kathy?
Yes, I did. So, you know, I've been thinking a lot about the growth in all of the list county, not just Toledo, not just Schehalis. But one of the things, and I'd mentioned this before, is that one of the things that seems to always kind of slip the cracks is if you've ever waited in the hospital waiting room for care, because our doctors are, you know, have left the scene since 2020. Medical staff short long lines for medical care. To me, that should be right up there with schools and how we think about.
There's a reason why it's not, though, because hospitals are not a public service, right? So we are required to make sure that there's adequate public service available, and we get to choose what those public services are. Hospitals are private. We do not have control over them other than from a land use perspective. So, so it is not something that we're able to regulate underneath of growth management.
So, so are they aware of the amount of growth that's being anticipated? Is there anybody in the hospital that really cares, or are they aware of it? Just like schools, they have to be made aware that, hey, we're going to have another 400 kids come in, or where are we going to put them?
Yeah, so, so many places like Arbor Health have a, have a commission, right? And so they interact at all the levels of government as well. So when they have a commission that's functioning like that, there is discussions about it. But there is definitely a disconnect at the state level between how we plan. There's even a disconnect between counties, cities, and like a fire district, because we sit underneath of different rules. So while we can have an adequate public facilities form, and we can have the requirement that, that fire be concurrent at the time of development, they are not required to use our population allocations in their planning. These are separated. And this is something that myself, the American Planning Association, and others have been asking the state to fix, is this disconnect between how we plan. But at this time, there is no requirement for it, which means we cannot ask someone else to do it outside of what is legally required.
I'm going to interrupt for just one moment, and it seems that Barb is still unable to unmute, and I want to make sure that everyone else can participate that's on Zoom. Eric or Frank, could somebody try to unmute and say something so that I can see if it's working?
Bob, test, one, two, three.
This is Frank.
Okay.
This is Eric.
Thank you.
Mindy, did any of the cities, were any of them disappointed that they, they didn't get more in, in our lobbying you to try to get more?
I mean, we had, we had discussions, and everyone was present at the vote. So everyone has, has voted to give this to you, but I will let Tammy respond to that.
I would say that we, that we were a little bit disappointed. It isn't the number that we were looking for. We were actually, actually looking for something around 32,000. But that being said, at least this number can move us forward. And then we'll revisit it again in five years, as is the process, and we'll see where we're going then. Yeah.
So generally speaking, everybody's got something that they can move forward on in a way that will, at least some point, address.
Toledo felt the same way, is that the fact that we can readdress in five years. I don't think we're going to consume all of that in five years, but we'll definitely be looking at what our new urban growth is by then.
Five years, you'll see whether the trend is, is holding, or whether, you know, national things are influencing and slowing that down somehow, or?
Yes. And we also hit up again, we also hit against infrastructure. As we get past these 300 homes, then we have to, we have to address whatever the next level is, so that'll slow us down a little.
Right, right. Barb?
Hi, everyone. Barb Russell, civil prosecuting attorney. Everything has moved way past the comment that I had, and I don't think the context makes any sense anymore, but good evening.
So sorry about that, Barb. Glad we, glad you can talk.
Jason, you got any questions or comments? No? Okay, Mindy?
Okay, let's talk about housing. All right, next slide there. So Commerce has been tasked under House Bill 1220 to tell or to help, I should say tell, but help the counties with how we comply with House Bill 1220. What they did is they put together a guidance document and a, and a model, which is an Excel spreadsheet, that you plug in the, those population allocations, that share of population growth, and it gives you the allocations of housing. And so they gave it to us. I'm going to talk about how we modified their, their methodology for ourselves. But just like the population allocations, the housing allocations went through the Plan Growth Committee, and they did also vote unanimously to forward these on to you guys. So both of the, both of them came out in agreement, if maybe some disappointment, but some agreement. Next slide. I think the really big thing that everyone always needs to keep in mind with the housing is that it is guidance. Population, the population allocations is not guidance. We must plan for that population growth. We must have urban growth areas that accommodate that. There, there are hard line requirements with population. With housing, that is not true. With housing, we just need to plan for housing at all income brackets. So we are not, we don't have to prove, when I show you the numbers here, that anybody's actually building those numbers. We're not going to beholden to them. What we do have to do, all of us, the county and the cities, is we need to demonstrate through a land capacity analysis that we've zoned the land such that we could accommodate housing that would meet all of those income brackets. So as the cities and the county are updating our comp plan and our zoning designations, that's where we're going to say, yes, hopefully, we'll all say, yes, we can accommodate through land capacity these housing allocations. The other element that we need to do is remove any regulatory barriers. So if a jurisdiction has regulatory barriers to emergency housing, shelter housing, or to permanent supportive housing, then they would need to look at those and remove some barriers so that kind of housing can go in. So that's really all we have to do, because the numbers look scary sometimes, but they're not as scary when you realize that they're really guidance. Next slide. So like I said, we, we took the commerce model, and we made a number of modifications to it such that the end result of our model matched the end result of the commerce model. So we figured as long, we can futz on the inside as long as the big numbers made the same sense. And, and we did work with Commerce on this. They've seen all this work that we've done here. So what did we do? We took the approach that larger cities that are located near I-5 should get a higher percentage of lower income, because they are better suited than the small cities that are far from I-5, right? So Centralia, Schehalis, to a lesser extent, but still, Winlock, Toledo are better suited for the lower income than Mossy Rock and PL and Morton, right? And the reason why is because those larger cities are in and of themselves employment centers, or in the case of Winlock and Toledo, they are located very close to employment centers. Larger cities usually have transit options that those further out cities do not have. They typically have more social services associated with the city, and those smaller cities don't. And those smaller cities don't have the infrastructure capacity. They don't have like the sewer capacity to support more multifamily housing. And that's really where low income comes in. And then, of course, the other consideration is multifamily housing does require sewer. So in rural areas and the unincorporated, if there's not sewer, we can't have multifamily, right? So it really does have to direct to the cities. And then finally, Centralia with their Housing Action Plan, it's very detailed. And we, for the most part, except for a few things, we have incorporated their Housing Action Plan into these numbers. What it all means is that Centralia and Chehalis get considerably more low income housing assigned to them than the other cities do. And again, we've, we've worked through this. I'm, I'm sure Tammy would echo the, not terribly excited about the way this is panning out, but they have agreed to the approach. So next slide is the big table. We've looked at this a few times, so I'm not going to go into a whole bunch of detail about it, but just a reminder, a few reminders. So what you're looking at is that each column or each row across there. The top line is your existing housing at all the income brackets. And then the second line down is what you need to provide over the next 20 years at each income bracket. So again, all guidance. We want to strive towards meeting these, but we're not required to, we do have to do land capacity. The bottom line numbers, so the total column for need for each jurisdiction and the bottom percent sum match Commerce. So we futzed on the inside with the different income brackets. We messed those all around from what Commerce model is. But when you, when you, when you total them up by city or you total them up by income column, they're the same. So we feel we are in substantial compliance with the Commerce model. So that's all I have about housing. I'll let you guys ask questions about those.
Bob, do you have a question? Frank? Jason?
I have a question.
I'm good, thank you.
Somebody's got one. Go ahead.
Let me throw a first hand grenade out there and then Jason, I've got a few. One of the questions I had is, and I don't really know the answer, so maybe it's for the groups and the cities is UGAs, we accept a UGA and it say it goes in a direction south. We have to go to get to that UGA. But maybe the city comes up with another idea that they would like to go north. But the individual owns the property south, but the city would like to put the water line north. And by doing so, they would generate economic interest in a different area, higher, flatter ground, whatever. What prevents that from happening? Do we have to wait for somebody to ask for a UGA and then go provide them water? Or are these cities, Toledo, you can speak up, are you going to head for that higher ground? Because I don't want people down in the floodplain.
So I'm going to give a generalized answer and then I'll let the, the cities chime in. It is actually the county's decision where the UGAs grow. Right? That is squarely our jurisdiction. We may say no to a city when they come in and say we want to grow wherever. We don't. We typically allow the cities to tell us where they want to grow. They should be doing a comprehensive look and making determinations about where they're going to grow based on where it's appropriate to grow, right? So not in the floodplain. And based on where they can serve over time. So it should not be based on ex-property owner wants to be in the UGA. That's, that's not the answer really under planning as to why you expand a UGA. It does happen that way, though, right? Because you have a property owner who really, really wants in. And then the city says, okay, yeah, we can put services there. So they tend to go that route, but the city can absolutely say no, and then the county can say no as well. If, even if the city brings it to us, we can say no because the UGA is not their jurisdiction until it's their UGA. Do you guys want to chime in at all about how you do UGA expansions? You don't have to. I'm just saying you can if you'd like to.
It's worked out very well for Toledo because the owners of the land kind of came to the UGA. So the people bought it that wanted to build. And we also have the, our urban reserve, which is our future UGA, has already been bought up by people who want to build. So they, unfortunately, that is higher ground and, and we are leaving them responsible for the impact they're creating on Toledo. You saw our number was astronomical from a percentage number, but that's only because our denominator is so small. And so, but that, what that means for the developer is that they're creating a huge impact, even as 100 houses for us is massive. So we are making sure that they're paying their way to help that be done properly.
And Chehalis does it kind of the same way. It is, it is property owner driven. They will come to us and they will request us to consider it. We look at it. We take into account, can we get utilities there? Do we have capacity? What about the streets? All of those things are things that we take into consideration before we come to the county and talk to the county about that.
There was a gentleman speaking behind you, Mindy, and I couldn't hear what he said.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's sometimes if you're not just right into the microphone. Sorry, they were sharing a microphone behi- behind us. So representatives from Toledo.
So what I was saying is we got lucky that our, that our landowners that are in our UGA were, were wanting to be annexed. And similarly, what I said is in our urban reserve, those same land, some of the same landowners and some other landowners specifically bought the land because they saw it was in the urban reserve. And, and so it's coming to us. We're not having to push a direction. And, and Toledo doesn't really want to make people annex that don't want to anyway.
Jason? Bob, are you still talking?
No, but I, I'm ready to, to set Jason up. So the conversation, Tammy, I apologize for not being there. I had to be on the road because it would have been great to have had this conversation face to face. But as, as development happens heading out Jackson Highway and I look at this development going on near my house, good stuff, good infill, lots of money, lots of jobs. It made me think, why don't we just turn up the hill and go up Kennicott? And at the top of Kennicott, there's like four major roads, Chehalis Valley Road, Kennicott, Centralia Alpha. There's about four roads that hit the plateau up there on the top. And I thought to myself, you know, that's a mile of sewer, not even a mile to the top of the hill. And boom, you, it's not a matter of, you don't have to ask the homeowners. I just asked one the other day, he owns 30 acres up there. He said he'd be glad for it to be annexed right into the UGA. His only concern would be, he wouldn't want the taxes to happen until his estate let it happen. But man, it'd be a windfall for everybody. So I'm just asking Tammy, as before we head down Jackson Highway, has the city thought about trying to, I don't know, an economic engine? Send a, send a water line down a good, a good direction and let development happen?
So to answer your question, kind of, we have. Actually, the developer who is currently looking at going up the hill part of the way for Kennicott Villa is, is really looking at it. And it's going to take a water tower for us to be able to serve water up that hill. And that is a massive, massive amount of money. In this case, I, I believe it's going to come down to the developer to put that in. And then they'll probably sign it over to the city when they're all done. And then maybe we can look at going out past there. But at the same time, we need to look at our population numbers and make sure that we can justify it too. Because as we sit right now, I don't know that we can justify expanding our UGA in any direction given the current population allocations that we're looking at.
That statement, hold on, hold on. What would, if you made a UGA and you went another direction and you made more UGA, what, why does that cause us a problem? If it going, if it's going the right direction and capitalism takes it that way and that's the way it ought to go, why is that a problem?
So we have to be able to say we need, we need the land in our, in our area for an urban development. And what we have right now, given that our population projection is at 23,000 and the reality is probably somewhere around 40,000. We have a lot more land than our population allocation gives us the need for. So until we can get that population number up to where it actually reflects the amount of land that we have for development, we're kind of in a, in a position where we can't bring any more area into our urban growth.
In five years. We'll revisit, yes.
It's a catch 22, excuse me, I'm chiming in, Bob Russell again. When, when I look at the map, a lot of our UGAs between Jackson Highway and I-5, which corresponds really highly to floodplain and wetlands and critical areas and all that kind of. I, I'm sad that there's a restriction that says, oh, because we thought we were going that way, now we can't go the right way. I mean.
Bob, there's no restriction. If the, if the city of Chehalis decided that they wanted to give back UGA. If they decided, no, we don't want to grow here. They can give back UGA and grow in a different location, right? But it is up to, I mean, yes.
Isn't that actually what happened when we brought Raindrop in? Didn't Centralia give it up and Chehalis took it over?
Yeah, there was a swap between jurisdictions at that point. Centralia has said that they anticipate that they will be giving back UGA next year. So it can absolutely happen where the city gives back UGA and moves in a different direction. We have asked the cities to make those decisions and bring those forward to us. So I would, again, it's, they're, they're the ones who understand their infrastructure constraints. So I would always look to Tammy about what you want to do.
And, and again, it is really, we have to ask the question, can, will we ever serve them with water and or sewer? Or be able to get to their streets to maintain them or take care of the stormwater in those areas? And if we can't say definitively, yes, we can do that in the next, as they develop or in the next 10, 20 years, then I, because of growth management, I think we're at a point where we would have to say, no, we, we can't develop that area. And then, yes, we have to talk to the county about giving it back. But right now, we're not in that position. We, we know that we can serve all of our areas. And I would say the majority of it is going to be developer driven. Where the developer is going to pay for most of the infrastructure. But there's some existing infrastructure that the city itself needs to take care of at this point.
And I guess since I have you in the room and then I'll stop talking, is Kennicott and, God, what's the road? Telecom are missing like 100 feet that would open up that entire hillside and then drop it down over Coal Creek, down the backside. It's like 500 high flat acres up on the top of the hill. And, excuse me, Tammy, you haven't been involved in my RDD5. I just don't like, there's so much RDD5 that should be something else. But, okay, I'm done talking. Thank you. You've heard me, Tammy.
Okay, Jason.
All right. So I had a, a question. So you talked last time about the state is going to mandate that in our cities that we open it up to multifamily on all the parcels. Is that, did I get that right?
So the state did pass a version of the law and I believe, I'm sure that Tammy was following it. Did it end up being 75,000 or more population or 25,000 or more?
I, I thought it was 75,000 or more, yes.
It will not impact our cities at this time.
Okay. All right, yeah, I guess, yeah, one, one of my questions was if that was going to take place, then we would have a lot more housing on the current plots we have in the city anyway. And, and how that would affect all these numbers. We'd probably get a massive amount of more units in town with the current infrastructure anyhow. But since that's not happening, then I guess that's not a factor.
No, I know at one point they were talking about 25,000 as being the cutoff, but I think it ended up at 75. And it was written very similar to Oregon's rule, which basically said that you, that you, you can't have single family zoning anymore. And so you had to allow up to a certain number of units. But it wasn't apartment complexes. You had to allow up to, I mean, I don't remember the numbers here, but like down in Oregon, it was six units on a corner lot, four units on a non-corner lot. The market could still build all single family housing. That was fine, but, but that was the, the requirement, but it won't hit our cities.
Probably wouldn't.
Yeah, and that's the thing is, yeah, people tend to develop to the highest density they can. I think your point, though, is really well taken and this is something that is part of that UGA test that we do. The state law does say that you're, that the city should accommodate growth to the extent they can within the existing city limits and UGA. So I call it upzoning. Upzoning within your city limits, taking a zone that is single family but isn't completely developed out and upzoning it to allow duplex, triplex, quadplex in your city limits is a very viable way to deal with population growth, right? Allowing infill at a higher density, right? So if you allow infills and stack duplex instead of single family, you can pick up a lot. And that would also go towards probably your 80% below housing allocation because duplexes fall into that. So it is an important strategy that cities should be using.
So I guess that would be my next question. So if we are not mandated to do that, is that something? I mean, I guess we only have two in the house to ask, but I'm curious, is that something that you guys are interested in? To be able to fulfill those numbers and keep the rural areas more rural by opening that up? Being proactive on that end of it?
Toledo did that, Toledo did that in 2020. We lowered our lot size from 8,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet with a duplex being half again a single lot, so 6,000 square feet in, in our, in our new suburbs that are going in at 6,000 square feet for a single dwelling and, and 9,000 square feet for a duplex. So we did that specifically to get some infill growth because we, I agree, we don't want, there's a lot of really nice areas that we don't want to turn into housing. We can avoid it.
And I would say from Chehalis's perspective, yes, we are looking at it. Obviously, we're looking at perhaps some design guidelines that go along with it so that we can make sure that the bulk of these duplexes, triplexes, they fit in with the neighborhood, that they're not going to build something that's going to tower over their neighbors and look in their neighbor's backyard or see what's going on in their, their laundry room or whatever. So we're looking at, we are looking at those kinds of things when we talk about that.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, I just, you know, I always feel like when we're having this discussion, I end up defending Chehalis so much. But, which is kind of a funny thing. But, yeah, I mean, kind of to piggyback off of what Bob was talking about earlier. Would it, would it be fair to say that generally because infrastructure takes a lot longer to get funding and to put in and all that stuff? That generally developers are moving at a speed much greater than infrastructure anyway. So they tend to drive it based on their foresight of this is close to current infrastructure. And so we're going to buy this piece of land and see if we can, so they drive it in a way that's not way outside the bound, but they're looking for those spots. And so they end up doing that and they're just kind of always one step ahead because they're a little more limber in that way, the way they can move. Is that kind of your take on it?
Yeah, that's a very fair statement.
Okay, yeah, and that's kind of how I assume, I mean, I think, I'm sure you guys would love to grow up in that direction or things that make sense. But yeah, I know it takes forever. And I've said this a million times, I think Chehalis is specifically dealing with having to catch up to their current stuff. And there is plenty of space in the UGAs and in town, especially if we go to more multifamily in town to grow there without having to expand. Which oddly enough, I kind of like, you know, to keep the cities more city and let the rural areas stay as rural as possible for as long as possible. And I think most people around here feel that way. So, and I just want to say, I know how difficult it is to get a bunch of people to agree on anything. So I think you guys did a great job and I think everybody in the cities, it's hard to let stuff go when you're trying to get funding and hit numbers. get funding and hit numbers and all that stuff for everybody to settle on something is pretty cool. So I would just want to tell everybody, I appreciate that everybody was able to work it out and, and without getting crazy. So it's a feat. So but I think everybody should get some credit for being agreeable and working together. So.
I'm going to change it. I've just got one question and probably Eric Eisenberg. Oh, okay. Okay, Frank, go ahead. You go ahead before I change direction. Unmute.
Thank you, Lori. Yeah, I would have to, to say here, here to what Jason said and I lived in the Seattle area back in the, in the nineties. And right after we left, they went into this, I don't know what you would call it, lot splitting, where they were trying to increase density for much needed housing in Seattle. And one of the unintended consequences of, of that fulfilling that need is roads and streets are just absolutely horrible to get around in. And in some of the neighborhoods where they've increased the density of housing to the extent that they have, there's just literally cars on both sides of the streets. There's nowhere to park. You know, and I can only imagine, you know, the, the additional strain and stress on residents constantly being crowded in with more people and, you know, the, the the tempers flaring, crime seems to have increased as a result of the increased population density and stuff. And so I, I'm really, while I'm, I'm pro-growth in the cities, you know, and, and pro-rule in the rule and, and all of that. I think even in the cities, we need to be really mindful of the social impacts of, you know, constantly increased density. You know, it sounds great because that's where facilities are and, and infrastructure is, you know, but those, those infrastructure. The infrastructure gets strained when you, when you start putting too many people together. So that would be my only thing. But I would, I would echo Jason's sentiments about, you know, the agreement towards coming up with these numbers. It's no small feat, you know, and guess what? We get to do it again in five years, but you know, at least it's not once and done for twenty years. You know, we can, you know, continually look and see where trends are going and so forth. I mean, you know, we don't know what's going to happen five years from now, but you know, worst case scenario, the economy tanks and nobody can build anything. So I mean, you know, we can, you know, we can, we can hope for the best and we can keep our eyes on the prize. But constantly evaluating, you know, where we're at and where we're going, you know, is, is the better part of wisdom. And I appreciate this process so much. And for the cities working together to, to come up with these well-thought-out numbers. Lori?
Okay, my, my detour here is kind of back in the, what do you call it? Unincorporated, unincorporated areas where you have to, you know, provide these different housing allocations. And Eric, my question was, do you happen to know if it's a fact that in Lewis County, if you have a manufactured home on a parcel and want to do an ADU, is it a fact that you cannot put another manufactured home because now it has become a manufactured home park?
No, this is Barb Russell, Deputy Civil Deputy Prosecutor. It's, if you've done a title elimination, then it's just like a stick-built house. It's a home in an ADU. I got one.
Okay, so the, the, the tip is you have to do a title elimination.
I don't know if that's required. I'm, I'm sure someone else can answer that, but it doesn't become a mobile home park. There, there's other criteria for that.
Okay, so you can get a placement permit for two manufactured homes on one parcel in Lewis County?
Yes.
Thank you for answering that. Eric?
Wouldn't, wouldn't the second ADU or the second mobile home have to, you know, be within the size limitations of an ADU? Sorry to jump in there, Eric.
I think it would.
But I was told by somebody, well, actually two different people recently that they, their plan was to do that, but they were not able to do it because it would now be a mobile home park. And I, I was a little unsure about that, but I appreciate the clarification because I, I think that that seems like a very good solution in, you know, out in the county.
It's quite possible that they're working on outdated information because Lewis County has changed the ADU. And before that was FMU code a couple of times in the last few years. But I've done it in the last year, so it's definitely. I went in both placement permits in hand and didn't have any problem getting them.
Excellent, because that's a really good option for people currently. I know some of the people that are moving out of the, kind of the senior manufactured home park there at the exit in Winlock. You know, they, they've got to move fast and it's a, it's a great option for people in Lewis County, so.
Keep in mind that there are standards for what mobile homes you can move in place. A new one has different standards than an existing one. And particularly if they're pre-HUD, you're not going to move those.
Right, right, right. No. Okay, if nobody has anything else, should we move along to oral testimony?
That's the next step.
All right. Have we got anybody, Megan?
We do not have any members of the public on Zoom, and we just have our representatives of the cities in the room.
All right, then I guess I'd like to ask the staff if they would like to have their opening marks and presentation added to the testimony?
Yes, and I believe you should also ask the representatives of Toledo and Shaheilis if they would like their opening remarks added in as well. That wasn't in your script.
Oh, I was, I was thinking that was the next thing, but.
I didn't have it in the script.
Okay, Toledo, would you like to have your remarks in testimony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Shaheilis?
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we don't have any testifiers? Oral and written testimony are now closed on the population and housing allocations. Now, the planning commission basically have everything they need to, to know. Does anybody have any other questions on the commission? All right, I think we're ready to make a decision. Mindy, do you have a draft motion for us to consider?
Yeah, Megan will pull it up here.
Do you want me to do this?
Yep.
All right.
Have a motion in a second.
I move to send a letter of transmittal recommending that the Board of County Commissioners pass an ordinance to adopt the population and housing allocations as presented in the April twentieth, twenty twenty-three staff report and attachment.
Second.
Wonderful. And shall we do, can we do an oral vote?
Okay.
I'll call your names for the vote. Commissioner Spogen?
Yes.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Commissioner Alves?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Corbin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Trastee?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yes votes.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's hearing on the population and housing allocation. Are there any items from the staff for good of the order?
There are. First I'll say, if you guys would like to leave, please feel free. Thank you so much for being here.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Come again.
Okay, so we have scheduled tentatively the next Packwood Sub area plan hearing on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And we would like that hearing to take place out in Packwood again, so that the Packwood community can be there. So I'm hoping that all of you can mark that on your calendar. Again, that's September twelfth tentative, but that's where we're hoping to do the, to do the hearing out there. It'll be a six PM hearing. Again, we will, we'll provide food. We'll feed you guys since you're making the trip out there. And again, the, the carpooling rules apply, so don't create a quorum in your car. That's never a good thing.
Be like at six o'clock then?
It'll be at six o'clock. Yep. And if you want to come ahead of time and eat, you know, plan on showing up around five thirty and we'll we'll grab the food. So you guys can have something to eat ahead of time.
I'll also add, you guys are eligible for mileage reimbursement. So for the last Packwood meeting that we had, as well as this upcoming one, if you would like to submit for reimbursement for driving out there, go ahead and send me an email and I can help you with that.
You can do it retroactively for the previous one too. So if you didn't and you want to, please feel free to do that. Okay, so September twelfth. See if you can get out to Packwood. Of course, there'll be a Zoom option, but it's just, it's a lot easier, obviously, when people are in the room. The other item is that we are going to hold a joint planning commission and Board of County Commissioners meeting. And this is going to be to scope for periodic updates, right? So here we go. We're headed into periodic update. We've got a long list of mandatory things that we have to do because the state law changed in the past seven years. But we do have room to do what we want in terms of addressing some issues. So we're going to hold a joint session here. It's going to be on September twenty-sixth at six PM. That is your regular meeting time. So they're going to come to this regular meeting on September twenty-sixth. And we'll do, hopefully we'll make it kind of fun. It'll be a brainstorming session. You can start thinking about stuff right now, but this is what we're, we're going to think about what we want to do in our periodic update. So September is a really important month. We have good stuff going. Sub area plan hearing and a joint session with the Board of County Commissioners. That's what I got.
All right. Any, anything from the planning commissioners for the good of the order?
Eric has his hand up before we move to commissioners.
Okay, Eric.
Thank you. I just wanted to add for the good of the order that Lori, probably the thing that your colleague was referring to was that if they wanted to put an RV on their property and have somebody live in it for more than thirty days, they had to meet the requirements of a mobile home as listed in the mobile home park chapter. They probably just misunderstood what was being told of them. If you want a site in ADU that's going to be on well and septic, it's going to meet all those requirements. It's no big deal. If you want to just have somebody live in the RV and they're going to live there for ninety days, a hundred twenty days forever, then they have to meet those, those same criteria. They probably wouldn't have thought they did.
Thank you. I, I'll delve into that a little bit. I appreciate that.
Sure.
I'll just add too, you can have them, you know, call into the permit center and, and check with our permanent folks. I mean, my colleague Angela answers the question about RV parks as living structures like daily. So she's the first in answering that question.
Well, you know, sometimes you hear something in, in, you know, the, 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 the conclusion comes from asking an incorrect question is usually what I find has happened. But so sometimes it takes a few calls and a few things to understand exactly what are we talking about? But at the time I was kind of scratching my head because I thought, you know, gosh, that, that would be a shame. And I was thinking of the barrier thing, removing the barriers. I thought, oh, there's a barrier right there if it's a fact. All right, the next meeting, May twenty-third, the agenda will be the update of the Packwood Sub area plan. And staff, are there any other items at that meeting?
No, that meeting, so we'll talk about the sub area plan. We will have had two new advisory committee meetings, so I'll be updating you about properties surrounding the airport. So we had that question. So hopefully we will have concluded-ish. That will be coming to resolution on that one, and we will have had another discussion about the mill properties. So that's what I'll be bringing back to you is, is those two
Okay.
discussions from the advisory committee.
But we'll do, not be doing any voting or any, I don't think I'll be at that meeting, so.
There'll be a lot of materials coming into it. So, but no, it will not be a hearing. It'll just be a workshop, but an opportunity, guys, to see what, what the advisory committee has been talking about, where they're headed in their thinking on, on what we should do. So it's kind of a preview for you.
And Mindy, it came to my attention last weekend during HOA meeting that maybe there, some, some, a few people wanted to give some input to the advisory committee. How would a person do that if a person can do that?
Well, I'm sad that they didn't come then to our open house because on Saturday we had an open house and listening forum, which we did advertise throughout town. All of the Facebook pages for Packwood, posters all over the place. Because that would have been a great opportunity. We had five members of the advisory committee there literally just to listen to the community. We had seventeen people come and they gave us some great feedback. Outside of that, my recommendation would be to have them call me directly. And I'm happy to meet with people. I, you know where Mountain Goat Coffee is?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my other office on Fridays. That's where I sit with people and they talk to me. So I think that's probably the best option at this point, and they can relay that to me and I can share that on with the advisory committee.
I've passed along the, or the information that you have on your sub area plan site on community development, which I think requires them to sign up to, you know, get on emails and they could maybe, you know, comment that way, but I didn't know if that was most effective.
Yeah, my staff contact information is on everything and I really encourage people, just give me a call, shoot me an email.
I, I did already tell them that, but I think they thought that, you know, you were, you know, out of their, out of their league. They wanted to get down to the nitty gritty.
No, if you talk to them again, tell them that I, I, on Fridays, I work from home.
Okay.
And I frequently am at that other office of mine, the coffee shop, meeting with people.
Very good.
Either just helping them understand what the thing is that we're doing. And then in some cases, they have things that they'd like me to, to bring back to the advisory committee for consideration. Yeah. I'm not as scary as they think I am.
All right. I'd like to get a most into adjourn.
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
All right, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.